We'll go ahead and call the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, Special Meeting, FY26 Budget Work Session to order on June 19th at 9:00 a.m. As a reminder, we are streaming this live, again, we are streaming this live, so our citizens have the opportunity to view it in real time, as well as go back and look at it on our YouTube channel. So again, thank you all for being here. First, before we move forward, just want to thank County Manager, you and your staff, all the work that y'all have done to get us where we are today. I know there's been some long hours, and probably a different process that has been gone through in recent years, but we appreciate the work that y'all are doing for what we believe will set the priorities that the community wants for their tax dollars, especially in a year that is reevaluation year. So again, thank you so much. And Board, to you, thank you for digging in through this process and working the hours that we need to get to hopefully where we'll end up today. Our goal today, coming out of today, will hopefully be we can work through the scenarios and then get to a consensus that we can allow the staff to then put together, so we can go to our 5:30 meeting, previously scheduled meeting, and approve the budget tonight. That would be our goal, but if we don't get there, then we'll move through it. If we have the opportunity to approve it this morning, we'll look to do that as well, but I know the staff will need time to prepare everything as well. So that's why I'm shaping that. I just caught Commissioner Adams' sigh out of the corner of my eye. At this time, I'll go ahead and move to Item 2, Impeachment and Pledge. I'll ask Commissioner Tyson to provide that.
Let us pray. Dear gracious heaven and father, in praise and thank you for this day, we thank you for the opportunity to come here and do the people's business of Cumberland County. Pray that you would give us insight and direction on how we can best allocate the resources that the taxpayers have given us to move our county forward. In Jesus' name.
Let us lead with this to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Another little point of personal privilege, the pledge this morning rings a little bit different. I think Commissioner Tyson would say the same things. Sitting in the room with a lot of heroes and warriors last night for the Army's 250th anniversary, just a testament to who we are as a community and what our military does for us each and every day. So happy birthday to the Army from yesterday. At this time, we will, I also want to recognize, we have our chief of our Fire Association with us here as well. Chief Johnson is here with us this morning as well, so just want to recognize him. We'll go ahead and move to Item 3, Special Tax District. County Manager Greer.
Yes, Deborah Shaw, Budget and Performance Director, will present this item in discussing and answering questions you may have. Deborah, I turn it over to you.
Good morning, Commissioners. Happy Thursday. The last, oh, sorry, Ashley. Ashley will be my driver today, so I can point.
Ms. Shaw, hold on one second. I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, is Ms. Counsel on?
I'm trying to assign.
Okay. Ms. Counsel, are you there?
Ms. Shaw, hold on one second. I'm sorry. Madam Clerk, is Ms. Counsel on?
I hear somebody. Ms., Madam Clerk, if you can, if you get.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am. Madam Commissioner Counsel?
What?
Commissioner Counsel, we're just recognizing you for the meeting to make sure you're online.
Mr. Counsel?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. I just want to make sure we acknowledge that Commissioner Counsel is online and if we take votes, we will.
Hello?
Yes, ma'am, we have you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Go ahead, Ms. Shaw.
I want to start back at the beginning of the fire districts.
Hello? Yes, ma'am, we have you.
The valuation before rebound was approximately $7 million, and if you take that times the 15 cents on the fire district rate, that yields approximately 10.5. The valuation after rebound was 11.3, 11.4. If you take that times the 15 cents, that would yield approximately 17 million. Let's go to the next slide. I had a Commissioner's request that asked about revenue neutral.
I can't hear.
Commissioner Tyson, do you have a question?
So just for clarification, I think it's just a clarifier, that's not 11 billion, that's 11 million, correct?
It's 11 billion.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay.
For valuations.
For valuations, 11 billion.
But for the tax rates.
Bring me out.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So again, we'll go right back here to pre-rebound. Again, based on the preevaluations, after revaluation, going into revenue neutral, you would have to go into the individual departments to yield the average of .0946 for revenue neutral as a whole. But again, these would be the individual departments. And again, it yields the same amount, but let's go to the next slide where I was asked to apply that, the first five cents off of each firehouse would go about into the pot. The five cents was 3.75 for low-well and 1.25 for the grants. So five cents would come off of every individual fire district to come back to .04 as an average. And you consider that yields approximately 4.8, that would be losing 5.6 million. So I think I have to answer. Any questions? If we need her, she has a question, she can go ahead. Is there any?
Commissioners, questions on what's been presented to outline the fire tax? And was there, are we going to show the additional, there was a question that Commissioner Faircloth had posed about the impact on the different levels?
That's this one.
That's, I think what, I don't want to speak for Commissioner Faircloth.
I misunderstood. I thought he was wanting to, because we would have to take five cents, so there would be less money going to the fire.
Okay. Commissioner Faircloth, I'll let you.
Question I ask, what does 15 cents do to the average single-family home in the fire district?
She has that.
Keep going.
So the scenario, if you went based off the recommended rate, this one's looking at 15 cents, and then the recreation tax is at the .5 cents. So based on pre-rebound numbers, your fire district would go from 279 to 416. And this is based on the residential value prior to rebound and then after rebound. So that would show you the difference based on the recommended rate.
Commissioner Faircloth, the recommendation.
So that I don't have to do it in my head? Do you know what that percentage is?
We have, like, that's only the percentage between.
Do I have to?
I'm sorry, I don't know. My staff will do it.
So what is it?
279.86 compared to 416.28. What percentage is that?
I got a cheap house. My house don't cost that much.
4.49.
4.49.
What was the answer?
4.49.
Four what?
4.49.
Okay, 49.
Oh, 49 percent.
49 percent.
Commissioner Faircloth, anything else? If I move to Commissioner Tyson, I'll come back to you. Commissioner Tyson, you recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I just want to thank Ms. Shaw and her staff for putting this together and for presenting it to us on such short notice. So I had the opportunity to actually talk to the head of our Chiefs Association and several of the chiefs here in our fire district. And Chairman, you and I had an opportunity to go tour Stony Point Fire Department and see, you know, where these dollars go. We got to tour the Chiefs Association facility out there. But if you talk to any of these chiefs sitting in here today, and thank y'all for being here, they'll tell you, you know, all of their costs has gone up. Their labor costs have gone up, their apparatus costs have gone up, and some of those costs have more than doubled. So for them, you know, they're looking, they want to provide the best service they can for this community. And this is something that is really a responsibility of this board to fund and to make sure that our community is safe, not just from a law enforcement or EMS perspective, but also for our fire departments. Because in a lot of scenarios, they are the first people that arrive on the scene. And so, you know, for me, giving them the rate that they need to be able to be successful is paramount. And I think, you know, given my conversations with them and what we've seen, I just think it would be very disingenuous of us to take that away and ask them to perform the same level of service, or in some cases, greater, and have a lot rest of resources to do that. That's just going to put our community at risk, and for me, I'm not willing to do that. So I thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to express my views on this subject.
Commissioner Adams, you recognize?
Yeah, and I agree with Commissioner Tyson. I was talking to and looking at it, a fire truck now is about a million dollars where recently wasn't it? But the other thing that hits me hard, and I've always talked about, and I've talked to our delegation about it, is when they go out to I-95 and have to go to one of those big accidents, everybody gets paid except for the fire departments. And they have to sit out there, they're in that zone, that cone zone, they have to sit out there all day. And they don't get reimbursed for any of that, and they're the first ones out there. Anything that happens up and down, and that's where they happen, and it's going to be worse. I love what they did with 95, but if you build up 95 above 295, people are doing about 98 to 100 miles an hour up there. And if we have an accident on one of them tractor trailers, it's going to be, it's just going to be catastrophic. So I agree that it is a hit on some of our hormones, but if your house burned down, then you don't even have a house. So it don't really matter, I'd rather have my house safe and protected to be able to do that. And I think that these fire departments do an extraordinary job, and I would not look to cut them on that, on the recreational tax. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioners, any other questions or comments on fire tax? Special tax district for fire? Can you go back to the other slide? Unless, Commissioner Faircloth, can you look at anything else on that? Ms. Shaw, anything else on this we need to present?
Yes, sir.
That answered all our questions. Do we want to go ahead and look at Parks and Rec before we discuss if there's any changes? All right, let's go ahead and move to Parks and Rec.
And now Parks and Rec, before rebound, it was 7 million. After rebound, the values were approximately 2.4. For five cents on the old values, you would yield a 3.8. On the new values, you would be yielding approximately 6.2, based on the five cents. Let's go to the next one. For revenue neutral, again, it's about .029. So take this times the new values. Based on the five cents, you're coming out to, I mean, based on the revenue, the neutral rate, you would be coming up to 3.8. So you would be losing approximately 2.36 million.
Questions on Parks and Rec? Do you need the same calculation?
I don't like the, what?
Did you want the same calculation on the spreadsheet?
No, I just don't like the word "losing." How much do they gain?
On the prior, going to the revalue, I'm sorry, Ms. Faircloth. On the new values, the five cents would be 6.1, compared to 3.8.
How much are they gaining?
2.3.
They're gaining 2.3. But not losing anything, is that right?
No, but we went revenue neutral on the, actually, the revenue neutral would be the point, go to the next slide, please.
How much are they gaining at revenue neutral?
At revenue neutral?
Nothing.
At revenue neutral, it would be .029. That would be the revenue neutral.
That'd be the rate.
Actually be decreasing down to 3.8.
From, where were they at last year?
No, based, if we applied the same tax rate of five cents on the new values, we would be gaining approximately 6.2.
Okay, at revenue neutral, how much are they gaining?
It'd be 3.8.
Hold on, hold on, let's, Commissioner Faircloth clarify his question, see Ms. Shaw, and then I'll let the other commissioners.
All right. The old number was how much?
Before rebound was 7 million.
That's the valuation.
That's the valuation.
You would, at five cents, yielding, based on the old values, was 3.8. The new values was 12 billion over revenue neutral rate, a .029, would be 3.8.
So, yes, so basically, from the revenue neutral to the, if we left the revenue neutral rate, the rate, the amount that would go down from what we've estimated would be 2.3 million dollars. So in order to get back to the same revenue, currently, we have budgets 6.2 million, it would go down 2.3 million dollars.
That's what you meant by losing, okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Adams and Commissioner Patel, round two.
I'm fine.
Commissioner Patel? I won't count that round against you.
I was speaking off of the Fisher. Yeah, I'm good right now.
Commissioners, other questions? Just as a point of clarification, County Manager, in your presentation you gave us, we had an increase in revenue from reavow was 1.6 million, still at 2.93 cents at revenue neutral.
Revenue neutral is 2.6.
Right, so we just said, we just said 2-point-something for the increase, but in the deck that we initially got, it was at 1.6.
We go through the valuations all the way up through the budget approval, so the values have gone up a little bit more than when we present the budget.
So it's, what was that number again, then, 2.?
2,360,987, it's 82 cents.
2.3 million, just for round numbers. Still at 2.93 cents at revenue neutral rate. Other questions on, Commissioner Tyson, you recognize, round two?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is more of a question written to the chair. So in terms of process of moving through this, is this something we're briefed on now, we're going to vote on this afternoon, on how the board wants to direct on these two particular issues, or are we looking to take this vote now to provide direction on these two issues?
We need to provide direction to the staff and the manager now, so we're going to provide all direction and consensus at this meeting, so when they bring it tonight, it is in the form that we can approve.
So you don't need a motion, Mr. Chairman?
I don't need a motion unless somebody wants to change what's been recommended.
And for clarification, Mr. Chairman, just so everybody knows, the recommendation is to leave the rate the same on the special fire district fund and the recreation fund.
What has been presented is leaving the rates, both in the fire and the Parks and Rec, at the existing rate. No changes to the rate.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Patel, you recognize?
And I just want to say, I do support both of those rates staying current. Just speaking to our fire folks and Parks and Recs and our elected officials out in the municipalities, it seems like there's a lot of catch-up that we need to do on the CapEx side, so this will be money well spent and back into the communities.
Any other questions on Item 3, either of the special tax districts? Okay, hearing none, we will go ahead and move forward to Item 4, follow-up Commissioners' requests. County Manager Greer?
Yes, Chairman DeBiere, what I would like to do is go in this order, I'd like to have Joe Utley present on the. Joe Utley present on the four versus six-year presentation real quickly, just, and I'll, well, Joe, just be there for questions. Then we'll have Robin with the debt model, Deborah with the updated scenarios for both operational and schools, and then I'll do the tax rate based on the 49.9. On the revaluation, I'll take care of this real quickly, Joe will answer any questions. Joe will be here for any questions. I think back in April, we discussed this, shortened cycle based on projected cost, four-year versus six-year cycle summary of the projected annual cost, and I won't go through all of that. Based on what we know right now, it would be our recommendation, because we went ahead and started hiring for individuals at a four-year revow, so it would be our recommendation, based on just the cost and what I'm going to present later on, is to go to a six-year cycle. Now, if we do, if we do, if we do go to a six-year cycle, we do have the opportunity within any time within that six-year cycle to cut it and go to four. So that's the reason why I say, I wouldn't want to constrain us and say, let's go four, and then we don't have the capacity to get four done, because we might go ahead and hire people right now, and I don't think, right now, that Joe and him have the capacity to get that done. But if we go to six, we could always even go a five, or do a five intermediate. But I would say the six would be our recommendation moving forward, it provides flexibility. And then, like I said, if we need to go to a four, we can within that time period. And I answer any questions you may have. And Joe is here also, he in the staff.
Commissioners, questions on item presented? Commissioner Patel, you recognize?
I don't have, it's not so much of a question, but an ask. So I don't have a problem with the six-year cycle and planning around that. I would just ask that, while we're planning around the six-year, we do try and push for a four-year cycle operationally, and the justification on that for me is, depending on when someone enters the market, their equity either carries more weight from a cost perspective, or then, or on the flip side, it's, it's not.
From my perspective, just based on timing and the thought of this, it would be my thought to do, try to get to a four-year. So we'll keep evaluating that, and if we can, we will, we'll bring that recommendation. We would bring that recommendation probably after year two or year one, so we'll have enough time to move through that before we actually do. Because it takes about two years to ramp that up.
Commissioner Tyson, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, Mr. Manager, this may be a better question for Mr. Utley, if that's okay. But I guess, for me, I'm just, to spend the additional money to do the revalue reset, when the board sets the rate every year, I'm just trying to understand, really, what the benefit of that is, because as we're seeing, the board has latitude to adjust the rate to compensate for that change in value. So the valuation is just one part of the process, and so to take and move it to a six-year or a four-year, we're increasing the cost of that, you know, we're having to bring on additional team members. Of course, it's going to put more on our tax office, and I guess I'm just having a hard time understanding if the board sets the rate every year, and that's what, that's what determines what all of our property owners actually pay, what the benefit is of doing a reval on a shorter cycle. And maybe somebody can help with some clarification.
Well, I think, Commissioner Tyson, the value of that is, we don't run into what we had this past year. We had eight-year cycle. We had values that went up approximately, in some respects, 72 to 85 percent. And it was, and we could adjust, true, you could adjust it based on values every year and adjust the rate, but we just don't want to get in a habit of having those big bangs in all. Six years would be, I'd say, the medium point, but we want to also try to capture that before we, the residents have a larger tax bill, or there's something that happens economically that could adversely affect values also.
And, one thing, before we get too far, this is not going to impact our budget. I really prefer not to spend a lot of time on this. Unless the board wants to, I would prefer to take this, we can bring this back, we can give you a resolution. I've got questions about privateization, we never looked at that cost as well. I don't think this is going to impact our budget. Our meeting today is to speak to the budget and try to get to a working budget that we can approve tonight, and I think the commissioners would all agree. So if we can just receive this information, and then bring back any questions we have at our August meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was the clarification I needed. I just wanted to make sure we weren't looking to provide direction to staff to make a decision in this year's budget.
You are not changing any manning personnel based on this recommendation?
No.
Then we don't need a decision today?
No.
All right, thank you, County Manager. Move to the next item.
Robin, the debt models.
So we continue, we're continuing to work through the, I mean, the updated budget scenarios and commissioning requests kind of go hand in hand a little bit, for the most part?
Yes, we'll do the debt models, and then we'll go through the different scenarios after the debt models.
And I apologize, I made a note on Parks and Rec, but I just want to step back, just some direction on that. We've discussed, but the Parks and Rec, and I know we're working through the interlocal agreement, but I think for planning purposes, that we need to look at that fund balance stays on our books. And I know the staff was leaning towards that, but unless there's objection from the board, I want to make sure that the staff gets that direction, that the Parks and Rec fund balance is not, has it historically been transferred to the city, that we keep that on our books. Any objection with that? Just to make sure the staff has clear direction for this budget.
I'll just major Robin.
Okay, thank you. My apologies for not covering that during that item.
Good morning.
Back to our debt models. This one that I have up right now is the education model. So the last time that we met, let me grab my laptop for a bit. Some of the questions that came out of our last meeting was pertaining to the fund balance that Cumberland County Schools has on their books, related to capital and to operating. And so we have Joe Tolan here with us, came in this morning, but he and I spoke yesterday. The only fund balance that they have on their books for capital at this time is $3 million. And obviously, that's not very material, and, oh, it's not, thanks. And that is actually needed, he would not feel comfortable, and I agree, that that small amount of money is needed for, when they have emergency repairs for things at their school, they would need that capital money. The balance in the operating fund balance is the 17 million is what they are anticipating close out for 2025. That could not be used for capital purposes. It's not, I did not add that to the debt model, but they had asked for guidance at some point on what the county wanted to see happen with that, and so I think, in talking with Mr. Tolan, they're amenable to recommendations with those funds that might help on the operating side. But the thing that changed in this model from the time that we spoke two days ago to now, is after speaking with Mr. Tolan, we backed down the PGO to $7.5 million. So if they're receiving $300 million every, for R and R over the next six years, they felt comfortable, or he felt comfortable at this point in time, recommending to his board, or going back with his board, to work with a $7.5 million PGO budget. So that did help our model a little bit, and decreased some of the transfers that are required from the general government model. If you remember, this number was over $15 million the last time we met, and we brought it down to 14.6. I think it saved about $21 million over the term. So that is where we are on the education model. If anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer that, or obviously, Mr. Tolan is here, if we want to ask anything of him as well.
And thank you for being here, Mr. Tolan, we appreciate your time. Commissioner Tyson, you recognize?
Thank you. So, Ms. Deaver, I guess, I mean, I'm sorry, Ms. Coons. I guess my, my question is, you know, when we got the recommended budget from the schools, on page 14, they're showing in the 2026 budget, capital outlay, 22,200 allocation summary of all funds.
Is that expenditures?
This is summary of all funds, it says 2026 budget, it's on page 14, and summary of all funds by object. And then if we look down in the summary by purpose category, there's another 20 million here. So see here, we've got 22,200, capital outlay, 2026, and then that's summary of all funds. And then if you look at summary by purpose, capital outlay of 20 million. And so, maybe I'm missing it, but if, if the requests coming from the school system is for us to fund infrastructure, maintenance, improvements to systems that are capital in nature, where's that 2026 dollar going that the school board is showing us is in their budget?
Joe, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm assuming that's your category 1, 2, 3, planned expenditures for 2026, is that what we're looking at, what Commissioner Tyson's looking at?
Absolutely, so this budget did not. Good morning.
Good morning.
Absolutely, so this budget, as presented, did not contemplate $300 million in deferred maintenance. So what this, what the 22 million is, is the capturing the sales tax money from Article 1442, that's for school funding, right? And so, as Ms. Coons talked about, if, if the 300 million goes through, then we can drop that 20-some million to seven and a half, and then she takes that variance, and she sticks it in here, as a revenue from sales tax.
So by dropping that budget, if you're saying it goes from 22 to seven and a half, what happens to the difference in that money?
It's covered in that list, so if you all, let's say we didn't get to 300 million, we're going to chop away at that list at a very slow pace, because we get about between 19 and 22 million a year in sales tax. And so, we would be doing that, it would take us, I don't, I never can do the math on the plot, but it takes a lot, a lot longer than six to seven years to do that 300 million at $20 million clip. So that was our plan, right? So if we don't get any additional money from the county, then this is how we do it. We work on our sales tax projections, lottery projections, and we budget it, and we go down that list. And so now, you all are taking that whole list, and we're accelerating it.
So, and one other thing I just want to say, for 2025, their PGO, as of just like yesterday, I believe it was, was just over 19.7 million for this current fiscal year that we're in. I did not drop their PGO to 7.5 until June of 2027 fiscal year. I left 15 million in for 2026, because I know all the process that it takes to get through the debt financing and such as that. I didn't know if they would need a little bit more money in 2025, 2026.
And maybe I'm just missing something, Mr. Chairman. So if y'all budget 22, you've got a revenue stream for that 22 that's separate from the capital allocation that we're giving.
No, this is all the money, the revenue stream that's in this book is sales tax and lottery.
Right, but if we do the 314, that's a bond issuance, where the county's taking that debt out.
Yeah, which I'm going to use the sales tax if we need it.
So that's my question. We're getting, we would be getting seven and a half of that, where's the difference between the 22 and the seven and a half going?
You all are getting the difference between seven and a half and the 22, you're holding that back in sales tax, because you're using it for debt service for capital, capital outlay.
I got you, so the seven and a half y'all would retain.
Right, because there's something they sign there, such as white buses is a big thing, right? You know, they were talking about fire trucks, that we're not going to do in this.
I follow you there.
Yes.
Yes, sir, so y'all would retain the seven and a half, and the difference on that, y'all would allocate that sales tax towards helping to offset the debt service and the bond issuance.
That's right, so you all would keep it here, because so now, what happens is, we do a project, we meet, and I'm in contact with your staff every month, and we submit our bills, and then you all reimburse us, and so.
No, no, you can, thank you, Mr. Chairman, that helps clear it up.
Okay, now, Commissioner Tyson?
Yes.
I gave you a little latitude there to get to the answer that I knew you were trying to find.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions on, on this model? Commissioner Faircliff, you recognize, I'll come back to you.
If I'm on the right model, okay, line, line since June 26, value of a penny, 2.5 Is that a penny on the half of a long time, is that what that is?
And Commissioner Faircliff, I'll tell you, I did not, this is a lot to redo here in just a short period of time. I did not go back and calculate the value of the penny calculation on these models, so I'll give that to the, give that to him if he does.
But that, that scenario, that didn't over, that didn't impact the rest of the spreadsheet then?
No, no.
Just my question.
Commissioner Tyson, round two.
Thank you. And then, the other question, Ms. Deaver, that I had, Coons, I'm so sorry.
I am for the both, it's fine.
I'm so sorry.
I've got lots of Deavers I left, so you're good to go. My two favorite people are Deavers.
On the, on the school debt model, kind of going back to that for a second here, the school capital fund, and we kind of talked about that, and I believe in 2025, we were showing a balance of that of 32,105.90. And for 2026, that balance is proposed to increase to 54,811.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Tyson, can you point to me where you are at? I'm not following, I'm not tracking with you right yet.
I'm on the summary page, the debt model you had emailed me.
The one that I've got up here on the screen.
Okay.
It was this morning. Last night, I'm sorry.
I sent you an update for the general government model this morning.
Yeah, but I'm in the school model.
That's okay, that's what we're looking at then, right now.
Yeah, and so, that highlighted bold line on the right, under June 2025, June 25, under school capital fund.
School capital fund, okay, yeah, that's our fund balance, this column right here.
Yes, and so, my question is, is that, is that fund balance inclusive of the sales tax dollars that the school system has? Or is that a separate pot of money that we have as a capital fund that is separated from the, from the sales tax revenue?
No, this is, the sales tax revenue is included in our fund balance.
Got you, thank you.
And the lottery.
Yeah, I'm with you there, thank you.
Commissioners, other questions? Ms. Coons, any structural issues that you see? I know County Manager Greer, Doug, our finance advisor, hasn't been able to weigh into this yet, but just from y'all's review, any structural issues on the education?
No.
Not right now for me.
I will feel better once, because again, this is DEC model, this is not, you know, Robin model, and so I'm playing with somebody else's creation, but I feel good about it. After our short parking lot conversation this morning, it did trigger a thought to me, and I went back and looked at something in DINGOV, that I'll talk to you about some more when we get there, but I think we're, I don't think there's going to be anything materially crazy that Mr. Carter will want to change.
And so just for, again, for framing of this, this speaks to, when we met with the school board early on, we heard $860 million deferred maintenance, we asked the school board to give us a recommendation, they came back and said, between 3 and 3.50 million, if you could do that in, over the if you could do that in, over the next seven years. This debt model allows us to allocate 300 against the deferred maintenance and another 160 against new school construction pending the report that we expect to get from the school board once they do repurposing and redistricting for any recommendations for new schools. So that's what we've been presented. That's what this board had asked for, and that's what we have. And we don't see any structural deficits, structural issues, I should say.
All right. Commissioner Tyson, round three.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. The other thing that we had talked about too, and I'm glad Mr. Tolan's here to kind of opine on this, the, the different issuances in the interval in that. We had talked about increasing the issuances and decreasing the debt that we're taking out. Out of, out of discussion whether or not 100 million in capacity, how quickly can they turn around those, those projects that they're looking to do? And so I guess my question would be back to kind of the schools. If, if we're planning, you know, for the 310 over the 7, in any given fiscal year, are y'all thinking y'all can break that up equally and be able to get that more completed in equal increments? Or would we look that as you're doing your infrastructure plan, that some of the easier items with the shorter term to kind of get turned around, y'all do first? I'm just trying to understand if we, if we take out 100 million in debt and we're paying...
I think, Commissioner Tyson, if I could, I think, I think the bigger question is, if we don't get into prioritization of your maintenance, is do we need to take it in smaller increments versus 100 million? Can we reduce those increments so we're reducing the annual revenue expense or debt service?
I think this is a more complex question because if we're doing lobs, we're going to have to have 70% of bids in hand. So a GO is different because it's based, the taxpayer is authorizing it. But if we do lobs, then we're going to need to have the bids in hand. So then you all would need to direct us on how you all would like to issue that debt. So then we would go out and get the bids.
So I'm, probably County Manager and I are going to probably say the same thing. I have a feeling. But I'll, let me just make a comment if I can. I think as we look at these three models, if we can move through these three models and not have any, what I would call structural deficiencies that we can fund, I think that working with Doug, our financial, we need to go back and look at, there's a distinct difference if we do a lob or a GO. And there's a process by which we go through. So I think if we can move through this with a structural and agree to the dollars we're going to spend and how we're going to spend them, then over the next period of time post-budget, we can work through the financial piece of it. Is it GO? Is it lobs? What's the, you know, when are we doing the issuance and those types of things? I think then we can get in the weeds. County Manager?
Yes, Chairman Dever. That's what would be my recommendation is that sometime in September, when we have a better gauge on the end of the year financials for this upcoming, this finishing fiscal year, that we have a sit-down with Doug Carr to go through all the debt models and make sure that we right-size and look at all the scenarios versus GO versus lobs. Because again, if we got to have bids in hand, that's going to slow the progress of everything.
And the difference in interest rates on the GO. And the GO goes to the voters. So then you have buy-in from the voters for servicing that debt.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. That gave me my clarity.
Commissioners, any other, any other questions on the ed model? Ms. Coons, go ahead.
Okay. Thanks, Jay.
Thank you, Jay. Or Ms. Tolan.
I lost my, okay, here we go. Sorry, y'all. I've gotten pretty good with my left hand, but not perfect yet. Okay. Thank you. Thanks. So from the direction of the, of the board, when we met a couple days ago, the request was to break the water projects, water sewer projects into a separate model. And so that is what this model represents. And so what you see in this model, so before, let me say this, before this, all of these projects were combined with the regular general government model. So all of the fund balance that exists in that model when everything was all in one place, that was covering this, was covering water and all the other general government projects as well. So when I broke this out, I did not move any fund balance into this model. I left all the fund balance in the general government model. And all I did was put the debt in there at the, at the levels that you requested and in the years that you asked. And so when you look at the summary page here and you see the total debt service and pay go that's required in this column end that I've just highlighted, that matches exactly to the total revenue that's in this model because all I'm doing is transferring from general government into this model to cover the debt that we would incur if we move forward with this. So you'll see what I've included was the Grace Creek, 45.3 million. That's what's, that's been in the old model for quite a while. So we retained that. And then I added a water expansion for 2027. And that, was that 40 million? Yeah, 40 million for that one. And then there was a second water expansion in 2029, and that was for 65 million. And then there was a sewer expansion at 75 million dollars. And I believe that one was 2027. Yes, it was. And then also I included the 10 million dollars. That was kind of a last end-of-day thing that we asked for on Tuesday. Those were pay go. So that's on our pay go sheet. That's the only thing we have pay go in this model. 10 million dollars for Grace Creek in 2027 and 10 million dollars pay go for Cedar Creek in 2028. So if, by doing all of those things, you'll see that we have a, a need of 454,62,122 to do all that within this water sewer model. And that's exactly how much I'm transferring out of the general government model to cover those needs.
Commissioners, questions on this model?
And I do want to say real quick, normally in your models, you see the capital fund, that's going to be the fund balance in this column. Again, it's not there because it's still, I didn't move any over. And so we don't have, what we don't have in this calculation in this model anymore is the fund balance coverage because there's no fund balance in this model. So that's why you see it, just ignore all the stuff that says worst over here. This is all triggered off the way the model was originally designed. But it just doesn't work with, with doing the transfer this way. So.
Commissioners, questions on water and sewer?
Ms. Coons, I'll just say thank you for getting this done in the time that you did.
Sure, yeah.
I think when we look at GenGov, and I know you're getting ready to go to that, and now the water and the education, I think it flows a lot better and it's a lot cleaner on how we're looking at it and how we're funding against our priorities out of the GenGov model. So.
You're welcome.
Any questions on this? And I'll ask the other question. Any structural issues that you see with this, Ms. Coons or County Manager?
Not right now.
So I found a one structural issue, and I'll flip over to GenGov right now and we'll talk about that.
All right.
And that was just me having a clear head this morning and looking at it again. So this is what I sent you.
Madam Clerk, if we can just keep tabs on Ms. Counsel in case she has any questions?
I'll test.
Okay. Just let us know. And I know, I think she's muted and we can unmute her and bring her in. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Adams.
You're welcome.
And I do, also, while you're looking that up, I just want to point out, Vice Chairwoman is at a medical appointment she couldn't change, and she is either going to call in or be in, or she'll be here shortly after her appointment.
Okay. So this is the last minute one that I kind of sent you this morning that had a little bit of a change to it, not much. So the information I think is important about this model now is...
So, real quick, Ms. Coons, we're on the GenGov model now. Okay, in case anybody wants to pull it up. Okay.
So all of these projects that you see across the top, these are old projects that were in this model. All of that's been stripped out. So there's no impact from any of that in here anymore. Obviously, we still got the current debt service. It's, we're, you know, that's related to our current debt, about 27 million dollars, I think, left after this fiscal year to pay. Yeah. So, yeah, 27.4 million dollars of debt service that's already in place. So everything else that's in this model right now is pay go. So I think we flip to that page first, if that makes sense to everybody. The things that I changed in here since we met last, I did, so these first four columns, it's maintenance and repair, IT projects, capital investment projects, and the FTCC transfer. Those are normal things that we are going to have pay go every year. I did update the 2026 budget to align with what Deborah's team has presented for 20, in the recommended budget for 2026. So I changed that. And then I was asked to do the Cape Fear Valley Medical Center, their med school that they're working on with Methodist, 10 million dollars. And I split that across three years. So 3.3 million dollars starting in 2026. And then Commissioner Jones had asked that I add the Cape Fear Regional Theater, 875,000 for four years. So that's a total of 3.5 million dollars total. So that is now in here. Then we had the mental health diversion facility request. That's a total of 30 million dollars pay go to begin in 2027. And we split that 60, 40. Aquatics planning, that is in fiscal year 2027 is where I've placed that based on a request. The Civil War Museum, that's a total of 7.5 million. In talking with our attorney, he recommended I break that into two fiscal years. So 3.75 million for a total of 7.5. And that begins in 2026. And then move the MLK Junior Park, all of that into fiscal year 2026. And then I changed the African American Museum, Black Voices. There's been some of that that we've already incurred in the current fiscal year. And that is 277,812. It's, the project's a total of 450,000. So 227 already been incurred, so 172 for next year. And then the unhoused support, which is the 17.4 million, move that down to 26 and split it evenly between 26 and 27 at 8.7. So, so everything I think that y'all have requested, I've captured for the pay go on this sheet. All right. So now I'm going to flip back to the revenue.
We've got a couple of quick questions on this.
Oh, sure. Yeah, yeah.
Commissioner Adams, you recognize?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I did go back and look at the minutes on the MLK. That was extended to like November 2025, the previous board. There was a contract that extended it. I think the, we had that in the minutes.
Yes.
Is there a signed contract?
There was not a signed contract. It was just the board approved an extension in November 24 to November 25. But there's nothing signed.
Extended, so just as a clarification, that was an agreement to, for, and this is probably an attorney question, if we can just get a copy of that so we understand what that agreement is. I mean, we're not moving any money, so it doesn't matter. And again, let me clarify this like I did the other day. We're not talking about moving any money from the MLK.
Right.
We're just clarifying an agreement because one thing that I am going to specify, we're going to have a conversation, is within X amount of time, we need to make sure that we have agreements on every one of these projects. And we'll set a timeframe to put those in place, or we'll clear them out if we can't get a contract in place. Commissioner Tyson, you had a question? Round one.
Yeah. The Community College Fund, and maybe I'm off here. Wasn't it 10 over 3? I thought. And the model has 6 over 3?
So I did 10 million dollars total for FTCC from four, five years. So basically, like we talked about the other day, they normally have a number in this column for their R and R. And I've just replaced that number with 2 million dollars for the next five years to get them to the 10 million dollars. And Deborah, you want to say something?
Yes, 26. We've got the, whatever we recommend, 1 million.
1.8.
County Manager recommended 1.3.
Yeah, 1.3.
So they threw 1.3 because that's paid out later.
So what I did was I replaced all of that with the 2 million, assuming that the 2 million was not additional. It was...
It's additional.
It's additional. Okay. So I'll need to go back and tweak that then.
So, so let's clarify the additional dollars there because there was, as one of our items that was brought up, we were going to move the FTCC up. That was one of the items that I brought forward. That would be in this line. So it would be 1.8, if I recall.
They had recommended, they had asked for...
1.5. We recommended 1.3, and I asked to move that up.
Yeah. They asked for 11.5, and we recommended 1.3. And so the difference needed, I think we...
200,000. It was 200,000. To go from 1.3 to 1.5, and then we're giving them the 10 million on top. So it should be 1.5 and the, and the 10 million over five years at 2 million dollars. So it would be the combination of the two.
I apologize for that for missing that one.
That's, that's okay. We talked through a lot of stuff. That's why we're doing this now.
Sure. Yeah, I'll go back and tweak that. And so that'll increase, for those five years, that'll increase, we'll put back their normal 1.5 million dollar number. So we can fix that.
Commissioner Adams?
And that just, that 10 million was based on the match from...
Correct. And so...
So they don't, they don't give the thing, they give the 10 million regardless. That's all.
It's a match. And what we directed a lot of times is we will do a resolution in August in our August meeting to that. And, and again, when we relook this in the spring next year, as we should with our debt models, if the, if there's a budget in place from the General Assembly and they did not allocate dollars, then we will strip this out of our debt model. Because it's a match, which is what they asked for.
Okay. I'll make a note and I'll get that fixed for us.
Commissioner Patel, you recognize?
I think when we were speaking last session, for the Cape Fear Valley, Commissioner Faircloth had made a good point, considering their cash on hand and fund balance, I think we could make their 10 million over eight years.
Okay. I can change that if you would like.
Five years.
Anything else? I'll go to Commissioner Faircloth and then Commissioner Adams.
I'll just speak to that. Originally, it was eight years before they basically became solid. Okay? That was kind of their breakeven year. But we're, we're quickly approaching three years of that, eight years.
Oh, that's true.
So probably five works just as well. I appreciate, I appreciate that point, though, but rethinking it, I'm getting close to the end of that eight years.
Commissioner Adams?
I just thought three years because of the upfront, just because we want to make sure that this med school is viable and we don't get in there and get a shortfall. That's why I think the three years is, is, because I think this is separate from all their fund balance and everything else they do over there. And we sit on that board. But this is to help with that med school. We do know when it comes online, you know, accreditation and all that, some things are going to have to really move faster than normal because of where they are. So I was asked, that's why I was putting in the three years as opposed to the five. I just think it's easier on them to be able to do that. If they don't spend it, again, as the chairman talks about, we can come back and move it down. But if they need it upfront, we can, this is... they need it upfront, we can, it's there.
Commissioner Patel, round two?
Commissioner Adams, I agree with you. I think looking at the other organizations and the other spending items that we have, that was the one organization that seemed to be the most financially fit to get some...
Yeah.
Way you went.
I want to keep them that way, Commissioner.
So, Ms. Coontz, from a, again, structural piece, if that adjustment's made over five years, and it reduces about 1.3 million a year, does that, I know you had a couple concerns on the structural piece of this gen gov, how would that impact it?
Well, I'd have to run it, and I don't want to get too...
Right.
Y'all don't want to watch me do that here on the end of my one arm. But I don't think it'll be, obviously, when we offset the FTCC as well, with the additional money coming in for there, I don't think it's going to be a huge change to the model.
So, you think at three years, Row?
If you want me to change it to five, I can do five. If you want to do three, I can do three. I don't, at the end of the day, I don't think it's going to be a huge deal.
So, just as a point, my conversations with Mr. Nagowski have been, they prefer three because of the upfront dollars that you heard Commissioner Adams reference as far as the upstart of a medical school with, I mean, not just the facility side, but the operational side as well. But they could do five years. So, I guess if our model works at three years, we leave it. If we think we need the breadth, to Commissioner Patel's point, to give us the room for the other projects that we've laid out, and give us some additional capacity, then we move it to five.
All right. Let me make the FTCC adjustment and see what that does to us. And then, if I need to, I'll make this a five year, if that's amenable to everybody.
Board, you okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I...
Anything else we can cover on the pay-go? So, issues that you were identifying, are there shortfalls and structural issues when we look at the revenue side of this?
Yes, sir. So, this is the revenue for this model. It's nothing more than the 18.6 million that we've always done in this column B. So, that's your, your known revenue that you're going to have every year unless you change it to something different. This green-headed column, this is the one that I added, additional revenue. So, in other words, on this revenue page, this column here, Transfer to Education, this is shown as a negative revenue for 21 years. That's the money that's leaving this model to cover education. And then, this column, Transfer to Water Sewer, this is the money that had to leave this model to make the, all the debt service payments for the water sewer projects. So, that's $454 million. So, when I had all, when I had just the normal transfer that we do, the normal revenue that we get from the general fund, and then I put these two transfers in here, and then I went to my summary page, it didn't, I had red. And I, and I wasn't meeting all the requirements on here. So, I went back, and I added this column, and I said, okay, we've got to have some new dollars from somewhere to keep everything in the black. And so, you'll see, in this model, it's a total of $280,400,000 over 28 years. It starts in 2028, and it kind of hangs at this $13 million level for some years. There's some years here in the middle that had to go a little bit higher because our fund balance was going in the negative, and then it starts to back off again towards the end. And the thing that dawned on me this morning, and I'm just being honest, when I was, when I was looking at this fund balance coverage last night, I was trying to get these at 25, and I'm looking at this one, I'm like, these are way more than 20, .25. I was looking at the 25s as a whole number, not the .25. So, I'm like, why is our fund balance coverage so high in this model? And after I thought through it for a second, the reason why is because this is, this is saying how much, there's no debt in this model. There's no new debt in this model. So, your fund balance coverage is very high in this model because all of the debt has been moved to the water sewer. And so, the transfers that we're having to do are basically to keep our capital investment fund balance in the, in the black. Before we did the transfers, some of those years were red. And so, that's why we had to do the transfer. So, then it started me thinking, and this is why, you know, I sent you an updated model today. If that water, the mechanical issue that we have by pulling the water sewer out of this model is we don't see what our fund balance coverage is anymore for the debt that's associated with that water sewer. And so, real quick, while we were all sitting here this morning, I plugged that back in to make sure we're not like way off on fund balance coverage. There were about three years that it was slightly below where it needed to be, but it's not, it's not, it's not significant. So, I would probably want to go back and just double check that a little bit. But that's, that's the mechanical problem that I didn't think about last night when I was doing this, that we don't get to see how the debt affects our fund balance coverage, because all the fund balance is in this model, and all the debt's in the other model.
So, quick question for open commissioners. If you look at line H on the revenue page, you on the revenue, yeah. So, we look at line H, we've got the 15, the 15 million, that's the, the fund balance policy transfer. Correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that's above and beyond the 18.6 million?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, currently don't have anything forward projected, and I know you can't because we don't know what the fund balance is. But if we looked at, if we modeled that and provided an estimate, because we know anything looking forward is truly an estimate, there's a way that that, some of that's covered as well. Correct?
My assumption, obviously, would be that we would transfer some amount annually into this fund. If you look over the last three years, it was as high as 62 million a few years ago, 21 million, 15.6 million this past time. So, I feel like there will be money there. It's just that, from a conservative approach, DEC has never wanted us to include that in the model for planning purposes.
County Manager, thoughts?
I'll hold my comment till later on.
Okay.
Because what I talk about will impact...
Impact the fund balance.
Impact the fund balance.
Right. Commissioner Tyson, you recognize?
Thank you. And I guess, Mr. Chairman, this goes back, not trying to be the dead horse, but this goes back to my previous statement of how, how you issue that debt, the timing of that, and the amount of that has a huge impact on here. And so, that's, I know you said, hey, we'll revisit that after we kind of retool everything, you know, but, but I guess, if, if we're trying to kind of get the model as accurate as we can, I think we really got to have an honest conversation about getting that sharp. Now, whether that's during this process or another one, I'm good with, but that's, that's my opinion on that.
And I, I don't disagree, Commissioner Tyson. I think that's why I said, what I said before. I, if we want to approve a budget today, that's not going to happen.
Right.
Because we have to look at general obligation. We have to look at an entire, I mean, that is a several day session and process that we go through, that then would go, you know, get the finance committee to dig into it after everybody else, you know, there's a process that needs to go through. And I think we can sharpen that pencil when we get to that point. What I was saying earlier is we have to get comfortable with the assumptions we're making here, and some of the structural pieces that we'll see. And I think before we make any other decision on the debt model, we're going to need to hear from the manager based on what we're looking at on our general fund dollars, because that's ultimately going to feed back into this as well. It may cause us, based on our priorities for our general fund, it may cause some additional constraints on our debt model. So, I think we've got to look at it in totality before we make any decisions.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Adams, you recognize?
And I think that these are kind of conservative numbers. I think we've been real conservative in terms of our, our whole model.
I know the interest rates, from what Mr. Carter's always said, is very conservative. We are financing, the education model is over 20 years of debt, and that is over 20 years of debt, and the water model is set for 30. So, that is a little bit further out for that. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Just one point of clarification. In the past, our model was very conservative, but municipal interest rates right now for what our rating is, is 4.5%. These are based on five. So, we really, we are really right on par, because we only 50 basis points different than what the current rate is.
And just as a point, Ms. Coontz, as we go back to the summary page on gen gov...
Yes, sir.
So, as we look at 2025, so June 2025, 1 point, or excuse me, $167 million is sitting in our capital investment fund?
Correct.
As a starting point?
Yes, sir.
And you can see as we, we move that down against fund use, even in this model, we, with your addition of the 13 million, you can see that that fund still stays while we're, we're burning, burning it down, burning, you know, burning, using the dollars, we don't, we don't get into a deficit.
Yeah. The one year that just like really caught my attention was 46. That's, that's a little, that's low.
27, June 20, you're talking about year FY '27?
FY '46, June 46, $106,862.
So many things can happen in the economy, you know. As we talked about this morning, just, just as, as we talked about this morning, you know...
Yeah, I'm not going to be here then, but I don't want to leave anybody else, so...
And Board, just, and Board, just as a point, you know, we're looking at these in kind of two-year snapshots, because you have an existing board that's in place for two years. And the Commissioner Faircloth's point yesterday, you know, after two years, priorities could adjust, and I think that's what you're seeing in this year. The other thing is if you're making the investments in schools, and in water, and in economic development, and public safety, we know those are the drivers to drive growth in our community, and to move from a tier one to tier two. So, if we're making those investments, when we get to those out years, five years, 10 years, 15, 20 years down the road, we should see a growth in our overall, you know, revenue side, because we're making the investments now. So, those numbers are going to look very different. I understand we need to look out that far in our models. Anything else on gen gov? Again, Ms. Coontz, thank you for the level of effort that you put in, and, and others to get this back in front of us. This looks to be the direction that the board gave, and you were able to give that back to us in a structurally sound document, so...
You're welcome.
Or model. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Next, I'll turn it over to Deborah Shaw, Budget and Performance Director, to go through all the different scenarios. And then I'll finalize with the 49.9 cents evaluation at a tax rate.
Boards, everyone good? Do you need a quick recess while they set up? Are you okay? Everybody okay? All right, we'll continue to move. If you need to break, we won't take any votes. If you need to step out for a second. Anything from Commissioner Council? She's good. Okay.
She's there.
Ms. Shaw, thank you.
Okay. I wanted to go, I wanted to begin before we got to the scenarios to make sure the budget and staff has not missed anything that has been directed by the board, so that, because it would not do us any good to get into scenarios if I've missed something. So, I believe I heard that you want to see a 4% COLA. We had recommended 2.5.
And that's at 2.6, and it will be based on the back of vacancies. FTCC current expense, bringing it to the full ask. A planning ordinance, and let me say this, because this is from the budget staff. There is a UTO contract that's coming through, and it's $450,000. I had on my budget to $75,000. So, I need to go in with the whole stuff, witness sign, the contract, and get it moved. I believe I heard from the board, FC, DC, 75 for staff and operational. And, and these are projects that have to, if the COLA is increasing, it kind of has to make, so we reached out to help to say, hey, instead of using a back to sideways, is there any management fees, any revenues? And so, that's kind of where this is coming through. We use, it's not sure. Then we get to, I believe I heard partnership for children, $300,000. And then, Second Harvest Food Bank is $87,250. I didn't, can't, we tried, it's not.
Just the size of it. Just got to reduce the size of the screen.
Thank you.
100K a second works. 100K a second works.
So, this is increased?
Yeah, it's increased. This is the total.
Well, the total's 100, right?
Yeah, total's 100.
Yeah, this would be the, this would be the adjustment.
Yes, ma'am. I got you. I got you.
So, United Way, 201, increase of $19,500. Coordinating Hampshire for older adults, $51,869. Vision Resorts, $35,000. 82nd Airborne, $150,000.
No, I think, I think the 82nd Airborne, that was ASOM?
No, that's his new one.
Okay, that's right. I'm sorry.
The base was historical, but the ask was for 100.
Okay.
Was it 100? I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay, he wants 100.
Okay.
Okay, so Miller's Credit, $25,000. Legal Aid of North Carolina, $20,000. Vans Cancel, $6,000. And, can we do something? There's Region Six, $50,000. I do need to know what Region Six is. If that's, okay, Region Six, okay. Okay, there we go. Then, again, these are the transfers to the other funds that, that has staff in there, and there's no revenue except for the general fund dollars that have to go in there. It makes sure we make those happen. We did go through, what I tried to do was ask a, like, $75,000. I tried to go through and look at staff, like, what, like if someone has retired. We've had some retirements. I've talked to the county manager, what's he going to recommend, the new person coming in, or somebody that's already been hired. So, that's how I kind of offset some of the expenses there. Vacancies, I went hand and used $547 additional dollars back off of vacancies. The cost was back off of vacancies. Travel, we've looked at travel a little bit more. We've, we've talked to the department, and they were willing to give up $14,901 in their travel, even though there's a lot of staff that needs training. And we can find those dollars.
Can we make that big back in presentation mode, pay-go? Thank you.
I got one last one.
He wants it bigger.
No, it's fine now. That's good. It's in presentation mode now.
And so, we went in to try to find some additional revenue, or what would be done. We went in and found some additional revenue that we, on the rental quit, they're coming in from tax. I've done some interest over there, taxes coming through. And then, I did, I did use fund balance for the education, for the FTCC additional acts. So, that would be the general fund started, or ended point, based on the adjustments. Have I missed anything that's the recommendation before, except for the $250,000 for the solid recommendation? We own our audit, we have $2 billion. So, what I did, the kind of... So what I did, the county manager, I was talking, used 250,000, and I laid it down as economic sites, economic development sites, acquisition, and then reduced that 2 million down to 1,750 for economic incentives. And that's in the fund balance based on the projection. We won't really save this on the budget. Okay, so that is the general fund. Okay, this is the capital investment fund. I went in there because I had overstated the Black Voices Museum. I'm breaking that down to what has been paid, the plan and design. We had a little bit of dollars that Assistant County Manager Phillips brought to me. He said, I'm reducing that. Spring Lake Parks and Rec, we've paid some invoices, so I'm reducing that. And again, here's the Kater Regional Theater. It's in the debt model, but if we're going to have a contract, and we're going to go ahead and make that payment, I need to go ahead and get that on the line for this year, so that when the contract comes through, we're not having to bring something back to the board asking you to vote it. Same thing with the Kater Valley. That's what I've done in case there's a contract, when y'all are ready, we would definitely not pay anything.
What was the Spring Lake Parks and Rec?
That's the, there was a regional budget.
We had a budget for 200,000 last year for, what's the...
But that, but that's... And then the adjustment office for the fund balance of the capital investment fund.
Questions? Commissioner Tyson, you're at house.
Thank you. The discussion we had about the purchase of the Lillian Black School and the negotiation with that, where would, are we putting that in the budget? Or are we going to do that outside the budget process?
We'll probably have to do that outside the budget process. Because even though you gave me approval, you asked for me to do some, for lack of better terms, some additional research, and I didn't want to put that in. If we can get the, we get buy-in for Spring Lake, we don't have, we don't know what the final cost is.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And again, one thing that will also be shown this afternoon, if it's the board's pleasure to go to adoption, I will have to include the additional FTCC capital that I have missed, and that will be shown too.
Anything else?
Good, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Additional, any questions on this? I'm just going to go back and take his 50,000, that extra 50,000. But I'll bring that later.
Let's do it.
Tulsa Initiative for Youth, but I was going to look at it for down the road when they could actually brief the board, but, go ahead.
Again, this is the N.A. Welfare Fund, because I'm touching general fund. I have to go in there, and this is based on the COLAs. So every fund that I touch on the transfers, it has to match another fund. But again, this is the fire disaster, this was the value. Remember, there was, values have been updated before.
49.0.
Juvenile crime prevention, this is, of course, it's not really the juvenile crime prevention, it's the group home that got stacked in here. Again, this is, may happen to make sure if it's on the general fund side, I've got to make sure my transfers aren't equal. Same thing for the open void development fund. Recreation Fund, we talked about that this morning. Remember the book, when the book was printed, we had the old values, we've got the new values in. This is the Community Development Fund. Again, is dealing with the COLA, the potential COLA, as it's saying with the, you know, the grid insurance fund. Litigation Fund, this is a 45,000 additional money. A request from the Sheriff's Office. Again, total adjustments for all funds would be approximately 14 million. To bring the all funds totaled to 623 million. So have I missed anything else before we get into the scenarios?
Commissioners, just if you want to check your notes and just give us a couple of seconds just to walk through it. Southport CIP, we adjusted?
No.
Amanda said we didn't need to.
They had just sent an email and said it needed to stay, as I had...
That's right, that's right, you're right, okay. We adjusted the 4,500 for lights for the garden, for Commissioner Adams.
I think it's what he just ordered, so I didn't have to adjust.
You wanted lights for the employee garden, so they...
Oh, yeah!
I track everything, Commissioner Adams, if you haven't figured that out yet. Commissioner Patel, you recognize?
Yes. So I did have some questions on, they're somewhat related to CIP. Looking at the leftover projects from FY '25, and looking for clarification on readjusting the priority and seeing if we need to move some money to FY '27. Did that get completed?
I may have misunderstood, but I thought the direction that was given to me was to bring that back in August.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to bring that back in August.
The August agenda session, I believe is what I was told. And that's what I've got all the teams working towards, to try their best to go ahead and get all the, where they know where they're going to stand for the end of the year for the payments that's coming in. So you've got a clearer picture in August.
Okay. I think that's it for right now.
We let the manager present his piece, and then there'll probably be some additional items that we'll talk through.
Well, I wanted to go ahead, okay, so before I did the schools, because I was asked to...
Commissioner Allen.
Okay. I just want to make sure, so everything is in the system, as I've heard, except for the FTCC, and we'll fix that on the system. To bridge the gap, remember we agreed, the recommendation we've heard got like a 2.7 million in there. So to bring this, would be an additional 4.9, and I was just going to use some fund balance. And that would get them to the 7 mil, that would get them to half, because you've got the 2.4, and that would be the 7 million.
Add the 100%. It's on the next slide.
100% would be 2 million that's already in here, and then an additional 11 million. And we would be outside of the fund balance policy. And the fund balance, because I was just using fund balance. Scenario, the 1 cent on the, from the recommended tax rate, it's 6.93, would generate about an additional 3 million. And the school funding would be 9.3. And then, if there's any, not any questions for me, I will turn it over to the county manager.
Yeah, before we came in here, I think maybe we weren't clear.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We can use fund balance, but I don't think that's the best use of, if the intent of this board is to fund at 103, you can't use fund balance because it's outside the policy. So we're looking for recommendations on how we do that. And maybe that's what you're going to get to. But I think the direction the board was to look at how we funded at 103. And it doesn't necessarily all have to come out of fund balance, because then we're going to have to look at the same scenario in future years. So Commissioners, any other questions on these series of slides? Or comments?
Go back.
Okay. I guess in the 103.
No, that gets them to half, half a million.
So how far is that 11 million pound of tolerance? How far does that put us on tolerance?
And someone calculate that for me, please. I believe, I believe they already has it on fund balance.
And is that above and beyond the estimated dollars that we've moved to the capital investment?
Yes, this includes everything that's in there. Everything that stands, the adjustments that I have gone through.
So when we look at our fund balance, we've got our, basically what I'll call our restricted, which is by policy. Then you got your, you got additional unallocated, that we take a piece of that and move to the CIF. That 15 million. The fund balance transfer...
Fund balance transfer is already, is already, 18 million, it's already gone.
The additional amount, not the 18 million.
Yeah, that 15 million has already been moved for this year.
Correct.
That's already been moved, yeah, that's right, all right.
So if, if to stay in tolerance, we have to reduce that 15 million?
No, because that was, that was in this year. We've already calculated that, that's into the projections, we're into 26, yeah.
All right.
What, we answered Chairman's request, 450,000 outside of the policy?
So percentage wise?
As it currently stands.
As it currently stands, or something.
Is it...
Any other questions for Michelle on this piece?
If we pull up this.
So when we, when we started, this is the recommended proposed budget at 55.9 cents.
Can we enlarge it?
Oh, or it's on the page.
Unless that's a change to what we have in the document?
No.
I don't think he can get it up big enough.
Yeah, because this is, show up on the screen. So, so let me go. The rate that was requested to look at was 49.9, 49.90. So what I did, and preference this, every year, every year, I go through this calculation. At the first of every fiscal year. So you'll see right here, and I'm going to start here. This is what the question, task rate was.
Commissioner, I don't know about anybody else, but I can't see it. So unless somebody can send it to me, I can't, I'm not going to be able to follow what you're doing.
Do you want me to give them a copy?
Yeah, let's make copies.
Can you email it?
Screenshot it and send it to us or whatever. I just can't, can't see it. Sorry.
Hey, see?
I mean, I can make a picture of it and make it bigger on my phone.
I'm going to make it larger.
Okay.
I'm just glad to do it, that section at a time. Okay. So what I'll do is, I'm going to start with the revenues. Okay, so, and I've gone, I've go through this every year going forward. So let's say we have 49.9 cent tax recommended tax rate. And so, right here, we would, the revenues for Everlo would be 188,394,868. And I'm going to slide over a little bit to your... So that's a reduction in the current recommended budget of 22,765,953 of property tax revenues. So for each year, and I'll focus on the first year, but for each year, you'll see this, our property tax revenues increase every year by 3, approximately 3%. So I use 3%. So this number right here increases by 3% every year at 49.49. That's absent of any valuation, that's just the money that we actually collect. When I look at other taxes, which are sales taxes, I did an inflation factor, a factor, growth factor of 1%. We're seeing stagnant growth in sales tax. I didn't want to go out too far, but I said 1%. Everything else was 1% also. So you'll see for this fiscal year 2025, the recommended revenues will be 381,446,137, okay? And that's, all of these are the same as in the recommended budget, other than this number right here. So we come down to expenses, the expenses have been adjusted based on what, the adjustments that we've had so far. And I'm sorry for this, but the expenses have been adjusted.
You can adjust down now, because I think we've got it, we've got it on our screens.
So... Okay, and the schools ask is only what we put into the budget, because I didn't know, you know. So with that, we had come down, and we'll have a net decrease in fund balance projected right now with this budget, a negative 23,749,944. Our fund balance to begin, 192, 192,250,861. And so our fund balance at the end would be approximately next fiscal year, 168 million. Now, we don't know what the outlook is. Well, we have it right here, so it may adjust a little bit. This may go up a little bit, may go down. But that's already reflected in this number right here. So that would be in the fund balance now. When I come down to these sheets, this is the most important part of this sheet here. Let me come here. Oh, that's the wrong way, I'm sorry, please. My apologies. Okay. So when I look at the fund balance here, you'll see our policy is 12%. And all these numbers, this one for non-dispendable leases, tax revaluation. The only one that changed outside of fund balance is the reserve, strictly by state statute. They changed by 3%, because ideally, if your expenses change by 3%, the reserve by state statute is going to change by 3%. I left all of these numbers the same all the way across. Because the only numbers we really need to focus on is the fund balance policy number, and it's the yellow one right here at the end, undersigned fund balance. Because these two numbers right here, this one and this one, comes down to that, okay? So at the end of next fiscal year, as I look at it, and if... So at the end of next fiscal year, as I look at it, and if everything stays the same, we spend the money accordingly, our end of fund balance would be, would drop from currently 26.4%, down to 15.1%. If the tax rate is 49.9%, delegate was the end of funded, available fund balance of 60 million, amount in excess of the, in excess of the 12% would be 12 million dollars, and give or take another million that would go over to capital. But when we move forward over the next fiscal years, you'll see that our revenues will only increase at 3%. That goes to 194, that'd be the total revenues, the total expenses. Well, that causes a balance, a budget imbalance, because our expenses, and that's just going at 3%, I said, well, we would have to reduce the budget to meet the budget guidelines of this, and also stay within our 12%, okay? Let me just do it this way. So let me go back to last fiscal year, right here, this fiscal year that we're budgeting. So in order to balance this year's budget, we would have to appropriate 23,743,944. That puts us out of our policy by, and makes it 5.86% of appropriate fund balance, and it doesn't do, give any additional funding for schools. And as you look forward over the next fiscal years, I'm just gonna use my fingers, I'm sorry. And you'll extrapolate this out over the next three fiscal years. And that's why I was saying we were reevaluated every year, because I would say, at some point in time, we would probably need to do a revaluation because of the effect that it has on fund balance. The revenues at the highest rate go up to 405, and expenses, outside of this is what the budget would have to be adjusted in order to make revenues meet expenses additionally as we look, move forward in the fund balance. In order to stay within policy, next fiscal year 2026 projected, we would miss, we would meet the fund balance policy, but we wouldn't have any access to go over to capital. We were at the same with fiscal year 27, 28, and the same with 27, 28, 29, projected right now. But right now, in order to balance this fiscal year, we value include the schools' additional requests, all the other adjustments outside of schools, we would have to appropriate 23.4, 23,743,944, right now. Now, but I said, well, let me look at other scenarios and see what would, what would happen and what rate could we decrease the current recommended rate and still stay within policy? The others concern before I leave this page too, really. Let me do it this way. Is that as we issue debt, one of the concerns that would happen with the bond rating agencies and the debt agencies is the use of fund balance. And they would ask the question, why are we using fund balance? So I just want to make that point also. But I said, well, let me see, what rate can we do, or reduce the recurrent recommended rate, and stay within fiscal policy, and then have enough funding in order to prob, to address other needs. So I came up, and I came up with a rate of 53.93, it's really like two, roughly two cents off the current recommended rate thing. And that will take the revenues down only, it would take it down to current recommended revenue 203, which is around 8 million dollars. And you'll see structurally, as we go through this fiscal year, next fiscal year budget-wise, you'll see that we'll stay within policy, and we'll only, we'll only use 8.5 million dollars in fund balance. Then that's only 2.1%, the policy is 3, so if we needed additional, almost one, one cent to plan anything for schools, we can use that, I think it's roughly 12 million dollars. And you'll see structurally, our fund balance would be, fund balance would be 90, we have excess of 42, and as we move through the years, it'll be 72, it'll drop down to 70, it'll be 22.45, 17.42, and then, or next fiscal year, it'll be 27, 28. Let me come back. And we would have to do a budget adjustment based on expenses, extrapolating now, probably about a million dollars, which is not hard to do. But then, the only concern year would be fiscal year 2028. But for this current fiscal year, at a rate of 49.90, we would lose 22 million dollars, and we would have to make that up in fund balance and/or programmatic cuts or organizational cuts. And I'll take any more, any questions anyone has.
I think you're gonna get a few questions, County Manager, I'll open up the commissioners first, and then I'll save my questions for the end, or comments as well. Commissioners, unless you'd like me to start. Commissioners, any questions? So, one thing that I think needed to happen is the guidance from the board was to look at funding the schools at the rate, this model doesn't do it. So I think we needed, the flaw in this scenario is that it doesn't fund at the 103, or give us even at the 50%, which is what we directed, it wasn't just for, so this model doesn't show either one of those scenarios. The school asks these to be in, as, as we look at expenses based on revenue, understand you're using a 3% increase in expenses, I mean, in revenue, but as you look at comparison to expenses, your expenses should be, whether you're using Tabor or you're using some other kind of formula to get a percentage of expenses, in those two models, your expenses stay the same. Expenses should decrease if your revenues decrease, or it should be a percentage. In both these models, the expenses stay the same, so I think...
That's the suggestion right here. That's where I'm saying that if it's 3%, I'm saying here that we have to adjust the expenses down to meet the revenue needs.
So if I can finish, my, my, my points are, and then you can answer the series of questions. My point is, is as I look at the two models, you've got 405 million in expenses at the 4.99 and at the 5.33. You have a different amount of revenues. If we have a decrease in revenues, there should be a proportionally decrease of expenses as well. And so the formula by which we model our growth in spending as an organization. The other thing that is missing, in my opinion, from this, is there are, there are not any cuts from the expenditure side, and we, I'm not saying payroll or personnel, but when we look at programs, what programs are not producing the outcomes that we should have, and where is the reduction in programs? The other flaw in this is funding specifically from fund balance is not financially sound, and I don't believe it's a model that this board would support, because it takes away from our long-term funding structure that we just went through with our debt model. So those would be my initial points, I've got a couple other ideas and suggestions on where we can find the money, but I'll save those comments till later. I'll open it up to the board to give any other questions before we let the manager respond to our concerns or questions on this model. Commissioners?
Just a comment, Mr. Chairman, you hit your nail on the head, I figured you and I were probably thinking along the same lines, so I just reiterate your points and agree with a lot of your assessment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
County Manager, I'm sorry, Vice Chairman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to hear the differences, I know I just came in, I was trying to listen without working on the road, but, and thank you all for announcing that, I did have a prior appointment that just could not be changed, but I appreciate that, I was trying to listen on the way. But I guess, like I said, since I did just step in, before I know if it's a flaw or not, when you answer your question, so I can make a rational decision.
Okay, you want me to give you what my recommendations would be?
That's what, that's what I personally would like before I make any decision.
And I would, I did this just to show you the outcomes of it, but in order to get to the 381 balanced budget and get rid of the 23, there would have to be some appropriation of fund balance, but we would have to eliminate all, practically all vacant positions, we would have to, and I can, I will outline this and bring it back for the board, but I didn't want to make assumptions based on what I was provided. If we want to fund, I don't think we can fully fund schools without cutting deeply into county programs to get them to the 11 million dollars, so, but we would take all vacancies, eliminate all vacancies, we would have to cut back on the raise and the 401K contributions, and then we would have to still use some fund balance, but not at the level in which it's here. I am not recommending in any way, shape, or form, and I never have recommended a tax increase, but if it, outside of a tax increase to, for the schools, at one or two cents, that would be the only way that we could fully fund without heavily cutting county services. Now, with that being said...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, can you repeat what you just said about the funding of the schools?
Well, because we have the 11 million dollars that we have to cut. And I don't, I don't, and let me say this also, let me do this up too, right here. I'm not advocating that we balance the budget using, changing the policy and the procedure, going to 23 million dollars, but if there's a board direction, or the board's request that I go back and find the funding, I'll eliminate all the raises, I'll eliminate all vacant positions, and I'll eliminate the 401K contribution. And then, and then bring, and we'll put in the amount that's needed for schools, but that would have to be some type of revenue generation outside of cutting county programs.
Followed by Chairman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for explaining that, because you all know I'm a vocal one of the group, what I'm sure, thinking as we do vote as a board, because I'm not for taking any raises out, I'm certainly for 401, definitely not for that, and I just want the record to stay, I'm glad it is online. I'm certainly not for anything to do with the tier one schools to be changed, so again, this is a board of seven, so no, we're not in agreeance, at least I'm not, and I certainly don't want any vacancies taken, we already have a shortage as it is, and, and no, I don't want to mess with anyone's fingernails, because I wouldn't want them to mess with mine, and I'm definitely, again, let the record stay, tier one, too long, I won't be recommending or in agreeance for anything to be done with our school situation as it is. At least that won't be my vote.
And Commissioners, let me add one other thing. I'm not trying to sway you all in any way, this is just information I'm providing, I'm not trying to make a decision in any way, I'm just trying to make sure that I give you an option to address. And if we wanted to, we could, and as Commissioner Tyson, you stated earlier, we can set the rate every year, so we could try to ease into reducing this rate every year to get to that 49.9. I, like I said, when I looked at everything, I evaluated everything, I went through this all day yesterday, I did not want to make assumptions and say, this is the way I would do it, or make the assumption that this was the best way without providing, giving guidance. I can do this, I can make that recommendation and bring it back to, and have it ready for this afternoon, or I can stop and I can get those numbers and put them here right now, but we would have to drastically cut in order to meet, in order to meet this rate, and these numbers right here, we would have to cut out the vacancies, all vacancies, the program for the sheriff, the 401K, I mean, the 401K contribution, those things would have to go away. Programmatically, we haven't evaluated programs that we can go through and say we can cut, because we haven't, because I didn't know about this till yesterday. So if I, if I could have, if I had additional time, we could go back and go through and say, well, this program is not effective, that's not effective. But most of our programmatic or operational expenses are in personnel and, and, in personnel and/or fringe benefits. And, and trust me, if, if this, if, and I will, and staff will find a way to make it happen. And that's what I'm saying, I, this is the number that would be problematic, and trying to, and, but we would find a way to make it happen. And, but right now, those are recommendations that I have to, in order to get rid of the 23 million dollars fund balance uses, and balance everything.
So, Mr. Manager, I'll go back to my original comment. These numbers that you're showing us does not bring, which was direction to you, bring the school to at 103 million dollars, it doesn't fully fund the request. So we, you did have that information, and what you're presenting us doesn't provide that. I will tell you, unless I'm mistaken...
I can't professionally, Commissioner Chairman Divya, I can't fund the schools at 103%, 23 million, without cutting and using cutting accounting programs. There's no way I can do that without cutting county programs.
Okay, so again, the direction from this board was to give us that scenario.
Okay, I'll go back and do that scenario then.
And let me also clarify, it's easy, and sometimes political, to put commissioners in a position where we say it's easy to cut employee payroll and 401K. So I think we've been clear that we want to look at programs, we want to look at expenditures, we want to look at things like ARP programs that were put in place with ARP dollars that are now using general fund dollars to the tune of about 2 to 3 million dollars a year. We understand that the payroll increase at 1% is 1.7 million dollars per annually. So, I mean, it's, it's easy to be able to say we want to look at payroll, because that puts this board in a very awkward position. That's not what we're looking for. You brought forward a 2% increase, you brought forward a 401K increase, you had a board that wanted to move to the average, okay? 3%, we've got 4%, I'm assuming this is at the 4%. So you have 2% down from where you already recommended. So you took the direction on the payroll, but we didn't take the direction on the school. So this is not providing us what we asked for, I believe, as a board, and I thought we were clear about that. And if you wanted to note your point that you didn't know the rate of the tax rate, we've had that conversation, and we could have given you that direction earlier in this year to tell you that we wanted to be below revenue neutral. So I don't think this provides us the information that we're gonna need to make a decision on the budget.
All right, let me, no comment.
Commissioner, Vice Chairman Jones, and then Commissioner Adams.
He had his hand up first, go ahead.
Commissioner Adams?
And it may, I guess there may be votes on the board, I was never looking to go below revenue neutral, that was not my intent at all to be able to do that, that's just, I'll just, nobody, I guess, asked that or whatever, but I was never below revenue neutral.
And I didn't say there was board direction to do that. I said if we would have had a conversation, a budget workshop, or there'd have been asked on direction of the board, that you may have gotten that input. But during the normal budget cycle, based on the procedure we went through, the time to give that was during Commissioner's request and ask for scenarios, and that's when he got the information. Vice Chairman Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm very satisfied, and I guess everyone's interpreting differently, I personally will not insult your intelligence or the staff, we can all agree to disagree, and, and, and again, I'm gonna, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I didn't say that you did, and I also will be able to express myself the way I choose respectfully. Now, I didn't say anyone insulted anyone, that's how I talk, I will be allowed to express myself the way I choose to.
Go ahead, Vice Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, because we all are adults in here. As I stated, that's just how I express myself. I'm not gonna insult anybody's intelligence, because we're all intelligent in here, that's not directed at anybody, people need to learn, I do believe, as which I said before, we might need some culture sensitivity training, because I'm... because I'm getting tired of every time I talk, someone feels they have to correct me or taking things the wrong way. And again, as I stated, I personally received what I felt that I was going to get, and everyone else, this is a group of seven, might have received something that they didn't expect to get, which is why we have a voice, a group of seven. Now, we want to give you other directions. I feel we can do so, but speaking for myself, as I do, which these seats belong to the public, as I always say, and we all have our own voice and opinion, I, I receive back what I don't have a problem with. But I'm going to state it again, if we give you other direction, what I will have a problem with is vacancies being taken out. What I will have a problem with is 401 being taken out. And furthermore, if we're going to give direction based on the programs that might have to be cut, I might have a problem with that too. I'm not for cutting programs that might can help. I'm not, I'm not, call it politically correct, or whatever you want to call it. So, I'm, I'm satisfied so far with what I've gotten. And in regards to ARP money, since we do have a policy committee, a finance committee, and an ARP committee, you probably didn't put that in there, because we're going to do policy and procedures. Separate money in ARP goes to our committee. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Sherman, if I could just clarify something to your comments. So, you talked about tier-one support for our schools, and our schools being tier-one. So, you support the, the $103 million versus the $91 million, the $103 million requested by the school, correct?
No, what I, what I'm stating is that if we can't find a way without cutting this, sometimes we have to give, we have to, as correct as this board is always stating, give and take. If that has to be done at the expense of this other stuff being cutting, we might, we might not be able to give it all at this one time. I'm not willing, just as we stated before, and I want to make clear, when we talk about the importance of water, water is important, school is important, I'm not willing to compromise one of the over, one of the other. I've stated that clearly before, because these same people that have pensions and vacancies and have to work, the same way everybody sitting in here is doing well and living in nice houses, I know I am, I have to ensure that this staff is also taken care of, as well as our overall committee. I'm, I'm not for, we get into that a lot too. I'm not in, against, you know, water over-education. We want the best quality of life. That includes those that are working here and that have to retire too. So, I hope that we can find a way to balance it out. I'm not one for trading in things, one of the other, as it's all important. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Vice Sherman, I think my question was a, a direction to the manager, and just want to make sure you were in agreeance with it, is that we asked to see a model that's fully funded, and then 50% funded it. This model that's being presented to us doesn't show that. That's my point. So, even at not fully funding our schools at $103 million, the requested, at 50% of that would be above the 91. We don't get either scenario, understanding that schools are one of our, investing in our public education is one of our top priorities. That's, that's a point I was making on this model that was presented.
Right.
Commissioner Adams, your recognition.
Would you give me the number for $11 million, 50%?
I'm sorry, Commissioner Tyson, I'll get you a second. Thanks.
So, Mr. Chairman, on, on, what's brought back? Oh, I'm sorry.
I think they're just trying to get ahead and do the 50% so that y'all can see.
Well, we bring it back, if, if you put in that school model, I would ask that not only at the 49, but the 53.93 tax rate, so we can get a, 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 a full picture of that.
And it may adjust. I think what the manager did was try to provide a number where he could capture, still get to a point where he could do everything that we asked for, but get at a lower than revenue neutral. So, it may be an adjusted number.
Right.
Yes.
But not, you know, besides that 49, yes, whatever that number is, but beyond that 49 number.
Commissioner Tyson, you recognize round two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, and, and actually, in looking at this, I'm trying to understand on the expenditure side, there's already a penny on the tax rate more on this model than what was in the manager's recommended budget. So, if you look at the recommended budget per category, for example, on public safety, he's got $82,729,790 at the 499 tax rate for FY '25-'26 recommended budget. If you look in the budget book that he presented, the recommended budget was only $80,934,941. So, that's almost $2 million more on this model he's showing versus what was in the book.
Wait, can I, can I answer that question?
Hold on, just let me, let me, let me finish. Human services, the same way. $134,408,790 versus $132,754,731. So, these numbers that are, that are presented in this model don't match what was printed in our recommended adopted budget that he presented.
Anything else, Commissioner Tyson, before I let County Manager...
I'd just like to, I'd like to know why it's more.
County Manager.
I'll let Deputy Shaw answer.
Ms. Shaw.
The, the colas, that, the 1.5% increase, we went ahead and dropped that into, like, like he took all the adjustments that I had from the board yesterday, and started with the balance. So, that's the reason why it's not going to match back to the book, because we've increased that cola, which would be, it's like the public study did for human resources, where we dropped down into.
So, so just for clarification, this manager or Ms. Shaw, so all the adjustments that you went over earlier are, are captured in there minus the education?
Yes, yes, sir.
And, and structurally, I was trying to get to a point where we can capture everything and then get the recommendation from the board as far as education. Let me, let me finish. If I misunderstood, I apologize. I'm not trying, I'm not a political person, I'm not being political, I'm just trying to provide the information, and that's it. Now, if, again, there are not too many options, and, and if, if we have already allocated the ARP, I may have heard that was mentioned, we would have to go back and unallocate that information. I could propose all of that, but I thought, since we've gone through all these processes with that, those were off limits. Again, I, I regret if I misunderstood, but again, I'm not going to try to, I'm not going to do anything that's perceived political. And number two, I'm trying to find a way to best meet the needs, to best meet the request. I left out the education at 50% and 100% because structurally, everything else is out of balance, and I did not want to take all the adjustments that you all would be looking for and taking them out. And then, so, if, there's no way I can increase, put in a property tax increase at this rate. The only, only option is cutting actual programs and actually retaking a fund, and trying to reduce the fund balance and stuff. And so, like I said, revenue, again, if God is, if I had God is, regardless of when, prior to, I probably could have gotten to this. If I had God, and, and I'm not making excuses, if we, if we need to make it work, we will find a way to make this work.
Commissioners, other questions or comments? Commissioner Patel, round one.
I have a question on, theoretically, so for the FTCC funding, the Cape Fear Valley funding, the CFRT funding, if, you know, it's, it's a decent amount of money. In government, and this is, excuse me for lack of knowledge here, but in government, if the county, not, we would still budget for it, but if there was a promissory note from the county to guarantee expenses or debt that was taken out by those organizations, could you take the dollars out of the budget? Or would you still have to somehow capture the, the liability for it?
You would have, you would have to still capture the, because the budget, each budget stands on each year by itself, so you would have to reappropriate it.
And also, this is just general fund, one of the one, not CIF, okay. And that's where the Cape Fear ratio is.
Board, other, other questions, comments? Commissioner Fairclough, you recognize round one.
Back to, I think, Mr. Patel's point. Cape Fear Valley asked, their original ask, I don't know how far back, but my recollection is it was $10 million over 10 years, and we ended up with $10 million over three years, you know, and that, that impacts the budget, the same amount of money, but it accelerates what they asked for.
But that's in, that's in, that's not in this, that's in the capital...
That doesn't affect the...
That's in the capital model.
This is the one of one operate.
This is operate. All right, okay, can I...
Yes, your follow-up.
Then, then is there a, where's the transfer from all the funds that we had in '24, '25, $22 million, and it's now $800,000?
At the top, line, line 13, Mr. Manager, or row 13, I'm sorry.
It's in the third column.
Oh, yeah, that's where we, the capital that we've already transferred from the prior fiscal year, that's in there, right there. That's the projection, because we had $12 million, I think it was like $15 million, is in that, the transfer from the capital, that's in that number right there.
And we don't have any of that for next year?
We, we won't know until the audit is done.
We won't know, but it's a possibility. Do we have a way?
We will, I would say that will follow the fund balance, and we already have that projected fund balance to increase $13 million.
So, say that again, Mr. Manager, because when we talked earlier, we said we wouldn't have a projection. When we're looking at that $15 million transfer to the CIF, we wouldn't have an estimate for future years, and that would be the same number, because it would drop to the fund balance, that would then, overages would move to the CIF. So, Board, I'm gonna, I, I want to see if we can get to a, a scenario that we agreed to, so the manager can run, and I'd hope that we had already provided that, but maybe I can bring some clarity to it. So, the manager originally, with the originally salary increases, let's, let's look at two scenarios. One, that the manager recommended, along with a tax rate at 499, or an additional one, an alternate one that he would provide if, if needed, schools at $103 million funded and $98 million, which is about the 50% model. And then, the other scenario gives the increase either at 3%, which is the average that was provided for the payroll increase, or if we want to go to the 4%, to be higher, go to the 4%, but give those two scenarios. So, one, the baseline is the 2%, what the manager recommended for employee compensation, along with a tax rate at 499, along with a fully funded school at 103, and then another one at 50% at $98 million, $103 million and $98 million. And then, break separate scenario that provides either the 4% compensation increase or the 3% based on the average that was provided to us by staff, along with the, the same other scenario. So, 4.99, 103, and 90, and 98 for school. If you'd like to have an alternate tax rate, we can put that in too, but this will give some clear direction. I believe the manager can then come back and give us those scenarios. Open discussion on that. I'm just trying to get us to a, to a consensus on giving us some, and that's, now we're not cutting any programs, we're not looking at, we're not looking deep as well. Commissioner Tyson, and then Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just say this, if, if it's the choice between programs or, or employees, I'd rather look at the program cuts first, just to be honest with you. So, I understand what he's saying, you can't do the evaluation in time, but I'm just, that's, that's my, that's my opinion.
And I just want to point out, the manager made a recommendation for his staff and his organization at 2%. So, we're saying cut, we're not saying cut, we're actually, we're, we're going from what Commissioner Adams talked about at 4% back down to the manager's recommendation. Two and a half, excuse me.
For clarification, Mr. Chairman, I, I, what I mean by cut is, if there is something that does have to be cut below the recommendation...
Understood.
Then, I'm, I'm not willing to go below the recommendation...
Understood.
On, on, on employees or their benefits. So, if, if it's that choice versus programs, then I'd like to see what programs we can put on the top of our...
Commissioner Adams.
Then, I guess, I would do it in terms of this question. I'm truly there for the teacher supplement, but if they can't spend, and they've never spent all of that money in one year, do we really necessarily have to fund it without coming back with a bud, a budget adjustment? Can we do less than the 103 if you can't spend 103 in one year? And I don't think they've ever spent that much in one year. Keep the teacher supplement part in there and reduce what we give them for the other part, and move it from there, if you can, you know?
Commissioner Adams, to that point, the 103 is their operating dollars, the 300 is a capital, and they're not mixed. So, the, the supplements and their plan on how they're going to fund those are rolled into the 103. If we did the 98, I think our direction would be to then phase in this, phase in the supplements or fund the supplements, but it doesn't speak to the...
I'll put down on the 98, and, but, but keep the supplements. I'm, I'm at the, at, the supplement stay, but you can take that 98 and move it down, because they can't spend all of that in one year anyway.
So, we see a scenario at the 98. So, you know, open it back up, Vice Sherman, and then Commissioner Fairclough.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Fairclough.
I would just point out, our, our supplement talk is all recommend and no direction, if y'all understand what I mean.
Yes. We can only, we can only allocate dollars to the school board, they have to make it.
Right.
But here's the point to remember, Board, we do these budgets every year, and if they are not going to follow what they've recommended, and, and follow the priorities that they've laid out that we support, then we can adjust those in the out years. And I think I've made that clear to the school board. So, again, Vice Sherman Jones, your recognition.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead. He's working on the scenarios, Vice Sherman.
Oh, I didn't know they had them ready. If they did have them ready, I was going to say, I was ready to listen to that, since you were standing up there, I didn't want to have you stand up so long. But if they're still working on it, fine.
Wait, no, 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 wait.
If he had it, I was going to ask if he had it. I would like to hear it.
Well, I think we need to, again...
Wait a minute, I may, I may have it, I may have it.
Well, thank you, I would appreciate the opportunity that you do.
Just let me, let me think.
That was my request.
Vice Sherman, anything else?
I would just like to give him an opportunity to pull that up, and then I'd like to, if, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, you asked me what I would like, and if you don't mind giving me an opportunity, if you could please, if we could just give him a minute, that's a lot of numbers, it takes a while, I would like to hear that, if they found it, if we could just take one or two minutes, I would just really greatly appreciate it.
Vice, Vice Chairman, I agree, which is why I was having discussion with the Board, to allow the County Manager time to, to work the numbers he was working on.
I think the two of us, because we hold that, we need to go to the restroom.
Let's go ahead and take a, no, 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 County Manager, County Manager, County Manager, we've been going...
I'm almost trying to balance all these, wait a minute, I'm only bound, out of balance.
We're going to take a 10-minute recess, we're at recess.
I think I got it.
If you'll go ahead and come to order, we're going to come out of recess. Just a reminder that your mics are still hot. We're at recess. We'll go ahead and the board will come out of recess and I'll turn it back over. Any comments to the board before I turn it back over to the manager? The manager worked through some scenarios and I believe is ready to present. County Manager Greer?
Yes, thank you Chairman Devier. And going back through our added in, and I'm going to highlight this item right here. You'll see that I fully funded the schools' request for supplements. You'll see the 20% and 50% is 4995. And there's a 495, that's twice that adds in here at the education item. And so that takes the total recommended expenditures to $415,000,94,313 for next fiscal year. And when the decrease in fund balance based on the decrease in the property taxes and adding that additional amount in, with all the other programming that we've added, the fund balance would decrease to $158 million approximately. When we look down at the end of fund balance, the end of fund balance for next fiscal year will be projected at 14.95. And then you'll see the different changes. Now, one of the things that we will have to do moving forward, as Commissioner Tyson requested, is that for these next fiscal years that I'm highlighting here, in order to meet debt policies and the programmatic items that we have, what we will have to do, let me see here. These highlighted items right here, if these highlighted columns, we'll have to evaluate program programming in order to stay within our debt policies and fund other things. And I would make a recommendation for this next fiscal year at 49.9, we could fully fund the schools' requests, we could fully fund all the adjustments that were made. And then next year, we look, evaluate the programmatic budgets and make sure that we reduce these expenses over here to match the revenues, which were totaled. We would have to start looking at programmatic adjustments, but approximately, we would have to look at, in order to get to zero. We're looking at $38 million in cuts. So, in order to get to, without having, let me see, no, that's the wrong way. So, in order to have a zero balanced budget next year, we're looking at $38 million and see the revenue enhancements, a combination of revenue enhancements and/or programmatic cuts in order to have a balanced budget for fiscal year 2027, 2627. The same thing is projected for, at this rate, let's see here. Let me do this easily. And this is not, and I would have to run the numbers all the way through, but I'm just giving an estimate. Ooh, that's not right. $42 million. And then lastly...
Forty-two is in 2728, County Manager.
That's 2728, Chairman. And then for 2829. Now, that doesn't, that doesn't count the actuals, they may be different, but in order to keep the fund balance policy generally the same at 12%, if we did that, we would actually have, if I change these numbers. Okay. 119, 316, 114. That's 100%. So, still, we'll, the fund balance will still be able to do it. Let me see, make sure this equals. I can't do it that way. But they'll equal, we can do it at 49.9, we'll just have to look at programmatic things moving forward. And I'll take any questions that you may have.
Questions? So, let me make sure I've captured this before we turn it over to question, County Manager. And thank you for working the scenarios, you know, on the fly almost, so that we could have these discussions. We do appreciate it. So, understanding that, just kind of on the big picture items, our employee compensation is at 4% in this model, along with the recommendation for the 401K. The schools are funded at $103 million. I know this line says 117, but for purposes of what we were looking at, $103 million. And then the tax rate is at 49.9, and we have not made any cuts to programs or employees. Just so we capture the scenario that we're looking at, I think those are some of the guiding principles we heard when we walked out.
No, and I'll say that next year's budget, we will have to probably, that would be the year in which we need to really, really look at the programming, because our revenue is currently projected at approximately $389 million, where our expenses will probably increase another 3%, and they will be at $429 million. Thus, you're looking at $40 million in order to get revenues to match expenses.
And again, just for clarity before I open it up, just so we're all, so when we looked at the 27, 2627, to kind of look at that year two of this budget, it's a 3%, you did a 3% kind of across the board on expenses. So, even the school system would be an increase as well.
And I would just say that this is just budget, the actuals may be different. Our actuals are generally most of the time, and I didn't want to make an assumption, that we only spend about 96.5% of the actual budget expenses. That drops the fund balance along with the vacancies and things. So, we'll probably have some flexibility there, but I don't want to make a prediction right now, as far as moving forward in the future. But right now, everything balances out to zero, just based on what we currently have. Do not take any additional questions you may have.
Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Tyson, you recognize round one.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Manager, for coming back and for giving us this so quick and understanding that time is sensitive. Just a really quick question, and I know you may be able to provide this, you know, offline, but total amount of our general fund that goes towards all programs funded in the county, do you have a ballpark of that?
When you say all programs?
The programs that we review.
Without salaries?
Just the program?
Just the program. Not the salary.
I have to get that back to you because...
Mr. Tyson, if I could, Ms. Shaw sent that out to everyone. It's a piece that I requested to look at programs across all the departments. She sent out a piece of that, that we could do.
I got it, I just didn't have the total.
Yeah. It's all broken up by departments.
Broken up.
Sorry, that's how I asked you to look at it.
Yeah, that's okay.
I would say approximately, since our salaries and fringe benefits are approximately 65%, we're looking at 35%. 35% of the expenses.
And the other point of that program sheet that was sent out, is it delineated between general fund and ARP or federal and state participation? So, if the intent of that, if we had to go down to program level this year, was to be able to look at where the funding was, was it matching, was it ARP that is then going to go away and we're going to have that compression on our general fund? That was the point of looking at that model, which, again, we're not looking at that programmatic level right now. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let me, just a moment, Commissioner Faircloth, to understand that I'm a little OCD about numbers, record filing, and so I can't have the fund balance not going all the way through like we should.
We'll let you work that while I go to Commissioner Adams.
Mr. Chairman and the board, you all know, I really, the 49.9 is just, you know, I told y'all I couldn't support the 49.9, it's just looking at what we need to be able to do in this county. However, because this board has, you know, had some leeway with the 4%, and also, you know, I was a big on the teacher supplements, and we're going to continue to do the teacher supplements. But I do believe that nobody can spend all of this money in one time. I would, instead of going to the full budget of 103, if we can do 100 million to the schools, do the, and part of that is that they do the supplements that we talked about, and then I could probably close my eyes and vote for the 49.9. I don't know if anybody else is, that's kind of, I got the thumbs up over there.
Can I vote one more?
That's another one.
So, the only...
That's more than the manager recommended, but less than the full what they asked for.
So, any comments on that, and then I'll offer my commentary. I'll let the board speak first. Commissioners, any questions? I think that's kind of what we're looking at right now.
Well, he said full, but I was just a little, you know, because, I mean, I always like to have a little wiggle room, and like I said, that 49.9 just...
It kind of hurts me, but... Commissioner, anything?
I'm sorry. I think you had a nice one there.
Commissioner Patel, round one.
I was going to say did, Mr. Chair.
There you go. I got two.
I got the most. Commissioner Patel, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Adams, just to clarify, if we went that route, if they did end up spending the 100% of what we funded, would we be able to do, would you be able to budget revisions to maybe bring them to that 103 if they needed it?
I think if we can look at, I mean, the manager, that gives us some flexibility to be able to do that, I think.
Commissioners, anything else? So, my friendly amendment to that would be, if we can look at 103, and then, because I know you love their fund balance, Commissioner Adams, we go back to their fund balance, and we request that $3 million back from their fund balance of the 17 million that comes back to us, and we find a way to move that $3 million back to us from their fund balance.
Say that again.
So, they have 17, the school board has $17 million in their fund balance. There's always been a lot of, in prior years, discussion around fund balance and how they use it. So, I would say, to keep it clean, we fund it 103, and then we let staff determine the way that we move $3 million of that fund balance back to the county. And then we have fully funded the schools' request.
I got to get fond of it with the school if I do that. So, now I have to pay for the school, they can take that off. But it works that way, it's still the same, Mr. Chairman.
The dollars still make sense.
The salaries still make sense, and I can, we can do it that way, that three comes back in our general fund.
Okay, I got you.
And... We, yeah, we need to, let's make sure, Mr. Manager, we can, we can do it that way. And I know Mr. Tolan is still here, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, but I just want to make sure, if we can do it that way, that would be the way I prefer to do it, that we leverage their fund balance, not the capital fund balance, their operational fund balance, which is really the 17 million that's sitting there.
Just leave it, I guess we'll leave it at the 119, and they, we'll leverage their fund balance. I, let me see, I got a little issue. Let me, Devin, we're going to need, I'll tell you what we're going to need to adjust. Hold on one second.
And is there, does that fund balance and the manipulations that you were making, Mr. Manager, bring it to 15% by chance?
Bring what to 15%?
The fund balance percentage? Where was it, 4.94?
Well, I'm trying to figure out, we're a little bit, we're slightly, 103 equals...
You got it, we see a million, you got it. So close, board.
One, two, three, four, 104. Mr. DeBrowne will need, and I know where we can get it, but we need $154,802. 154, just make $155,000, and we can just change interest, because we're probably, interest rates are going to stay high, and we have some leeway there. But we just need that so we can stay within the fund balance policy of 3%. Because right now, we'll be, right now, the fund balance use policy will be 3.04.
That's about to be me.
So, we need, we need actually 154, 154,800, I just say, round up to 155. And that way, we'll be within policy for this upcoming budget year, and then we need to look at the programs for the next funding. But everything else will stay in the budget.
Or change the rate. Or change the rate.
So, we need to find $154,000?
Yeah, we got it.
We can...
I told him where to get it from, early.
So, so let me make sure where we are. So, seems like we've got consensus, based on what the manager has provided, we're at employee compensation 4% COLA, which is 2% above what the manager...
One and a half.
Yeah, a point and a half above, plus the 401K, 103 million, so that fully funds the school request, a tax rate at 49.9, and understanding that our fund balance percentage would be, what is it at now, then?
Right now, it's a 26.45, if I remember correctly, but it would go down to 14.54.
14.54.
Yeah.
And then, understanding that, just looking forward, we'll have, we'll have about a roughly $20 million, you know, that we're going to be looking at in future, in future years from a programmatic or from a general fund, and again, depending on where we fund the operational side in future years. And this doesn't talk about, we're already, you know, kind of looking at this in buckets. So, our special tax districts are contained in what we talked about this morning, our debt models are in agreeance with what we agreed this morning, which all plays back why this is important to look at this finally, because this feeds into, the fund balance feeds into both of the, or one of those items. And now, we've got the operational... And now, we've got the operational side, the general fund bucket, we're agreeing to what I just outlined, and that should give us all the parts of the budget for the staff to put together for tonight. Are we, is there consensus? And you got your $4,500.
I know, I'm just trying to kid the show.
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Miss Staff, do we have any questions? Ms. Shaw?
I guess, when I bring the budget, the potential budget forward, I will go ahead and remove anybody's conflict of interest to get a vote on that, and then I'll do amendment to those community funding to put them back in, if that's the pleasure of the board.
Yes, that's the pleasure, and we just need to, if we can just walk through those with Ms. Tebby to make sure I can kind of get the board prepped on, on how that vote will work. For those of us that have not been through these processes before, I think it's important. And I just, again, want to clarify, the manager briefed us on the conflict of interest, it's a direct conflict for anyone serving on the board, just you directly, not your immediate family, it's just you directly. And we can have the manager clear, I'd like the man, I'm sorry, not the manager, I'd like the attorney to clarify that tonight before we take the vote, so there's, there is, you want to clarify? You're not sitting in your seat. Will you clarify that one, and I'm going to ask you to clarify it tonight, but I think, did I state it right?
I've got a major...
We understand, we understand. But I didn't, I stated it correctly, correct, Mr. Manager?
We can add a couple, and as long as you were not about the loan profit that you reported about the board.
Correct. If we can just have that part of tonight, that we clarify that as a statement from the attorney before we take the votes. Anything else, Board? Staff, any further direction?
No, I'm good, I'm good.
Commissioner Fairclough?
So, to be clear, we're coming back at 5:30.
Yes, sir.
And we will have a budget ordinance ready to be signed.
And if we can finish by 8 o'clock, that would be great.
We can finish by 6 o'clock.
About 5:30.
There's a little, there's a game. There's a little event that happens at 8:30 that I would like to be on the TV for.
No talking this afternoon for the chairman tonight.
I will control, I will control.
I'm going to need to see the Pacers play tonight.
Because already, I'm getting my reimbursement set.
Board, any, staff, again, any direction? So, we're going to have the budget ordinance tonight, we'll have associated, we'll have everything we need to convene and meet at 5:30, we will move through it rapidly to give everybody back time in their evening. Again, thank you to the staff for your work, I know this has been a different process, but we appreciate it, I think this speaks to the priorities that the board laid out in their strategic planning, it invests in the areas that we want to invest in, including our workforce, our employee workforce as well. So, thank you, staff, for the work. Board, thank you, I know it can get contentious, but I think we handled it very well through this process, and I appreciate, appreciate it, appreciate your leadership through this. And at this time, I'll ask for if there's any additional items to come before the board.
Mr. Chairman, it's 12 o'clock, when lunch?
I'll buy you.
You've had to hear all day, Mr. Chairman. I didn't get brunch this morning, last night I was working.
I'm glad to buy you lunch, Commissioner Adams.
You're open, Mr. Chairman, you're open.
Any other, any other business come before this board?
Most to adjourn.
Vice Chairman Jones, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand, your adjourn. More adjourned.